Praise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the Atterboro School Committee meeting of Monday, March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is your notice that this meeting is being electronically recorded. Tonight, we will start with our spotlight event, and for introductions, I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Regan.
Thank you, Chairman Withers. So last week, we had our first community showcase event where our community partners, as well as our educators and students, presented learning experiences, and we were able to actually actualize our vision to be the center of the community united around education. Our community partners were able to share the many resources and materials that they have available to our students and families, and our educators and students shared the variety of ways that our students are able to learn and then show what they've learned. So tonight, we wanted to highlight and first of all, thank the band who was able to perform that evening. We wanted to thank our culinary students who made over five hundred sliders, fresh lemonade, and blueberry triangles. But we also wanted to thank our TV and radio broadcasting students who are here with us this evening that created learning experiences, a video of our learning experiences across all three levels. And we've invited Ms. Bergeron here to share this video with you and to also recognize them for all of the time they have dedicated to creating this video and to showing us what movie magic, as they say, really is. So I'm going to hand it over to them so that they can press play.
While most people picture learning as sitting at a desk and writing, the students in Attleboro Public Schools are approaching learning in innovative ways. Jack and Kelvin, seniors in Attleboro High School's Career and Technical Education Carpentry Program, are working on their senior project, building a courtroom for criminal justice and mock trial. This has helped prepare them for their co-op experience, working with local businesses in the community.
It's like you're actually doing things with your hands, and that's how you learn. It's not like you can learn the basics of it through a textbook, but the way that you learn most effectively is by actually doing, grabbing a hammer, and shooting nails wherever it's needed.
The level of independence that we are given has kind of prepared me to just like, you know, be on a co-op with Kelvin, like, because we're given a certain level of independence there, too. And, you know, they have to trust us to do certain things the right way.
I feel like it definitely prepared me in the sense that I'm even more confident in being a carpenter. Coming up next week, we're actually going to be doing finish work with the co-op, so this could be also like maybe like a base foundation of what it's like to do finish work.
At Brennan Middle School, the eighth grade students have been working on my teamwork and creativity by making body biographies, where they created a visual analysis of characters from the book Rio, the middle school companion to the Attleboro Big Read.
So the hands-on project helps us bring together as a group instead of just individually, and it also brings in other aspects of our learning, like our artistic skills. I feel like it just promotes more togetherness in our classroom.
I liked how we got to dive into the creative minds of some of the classmates. And I liked how, you know, there's not as much pressure on you because it's not independent. You have some of your peers to help you out, and it was more fun, you know, since it's not just like writing with a bleak pencil.
I liked about the book how emotional and eye-opening it was, especially with people with special abilities.
I like being in a group with people because of the learning aspect. We all get to learn from each other's ideas.
Which is where I did, which was charity's code.
Because it was the people who I would usually work with, and, you know, they helped make the project more enjoyable, more fun, and they made learning more fun.
Meanwhile, the sixth graders have been crafting their own ziggurats within groups, using various materials and communication skills to recreate an ancient Mayan civilization.
So right now, we're building a ziggurat. A ziggurat is like a temple, and it has a bunch of staircases. They're made out of very, very strong mud bricks. And at the top is a holy place. That's where they did like rituals, sacrifices, and that's where the priests were.
My favorite part of this project, I kind of like kind of working together. And we were kind of struggling at first, but as soon as we got everything together and we started like giving ourselves jobs and stuff, now we're almost done their painting right now, so.
I've learned that not everything's gonna go how you want it to go because you're working with other people, and other people have some really good ideas. Even if you have this one good idea and you want to go with it, not everyone's going to agree with that.
At the high school level, students in Mrs. Steventhal's chemistry elective are lighting up the classroom. They were challenged with creating an electrical charge using only salt and water to light a light bulb. Through hands-on trial and error, students were able to learn a lot from this experience.
What I like about this project is that we've done everything from scratch. We grabbed the glasses, we mixed the water in, and we get to choose the amount of all the materials that we use. You know, the amount of wiring, what kind of bulb we use. That's just like the overall freedom that we're allowed is what's really good.
That's very hands-on, which I like about it. I like when the class is hands-on because it makes me feel like I'm actually learning because I'm physically doing something with my hands.
So the challenges during this whole project is actually getting the bulb to work, getting the whole thing to work. Because with all the different, you know, components and parts in that, you know, all the wiring, the amount of salt, water, all the small details actually really, you know, they matter in the thing working. So just figuring out the right like amounts of everything is, was pretty challenging.
STEM activities are providing a fun, educational, and engaging experience for students at Studley Elementary School. The makerspace time dedicated allows a non-conventional method of learning where students get to explore and problem-solve through hands-on activities.
Sometimes we get to do, like, we get to build stuff, and like, one time I built, I built like stair steps with these like kind of magnet things, and that was really cool.
I tried to see what I like. I don't destroy it. I tried to see like what it will fix. Like, if it's something that goes wrong, I'll try to be like, I can try to build it onto it because it might be better.
First doing the frame on the bottom, and then I'm gonna put like the key tips up, the four key tips up, and then put the other key tip on top of the four on the side, and it fits for the top.
I really like how we can communicate and share our ideas.
The achievements of student-led activities reaches far beyond the classroom. With the help of staff, the AHS Debate Club and Student Council organized a mayoral debate that was held at the Bray Auditorium and was open to the community.
Obviously, we have a brand-new school, which, I mean, we really, we were able to take advantage of it and give the community some that will benefit them because they got to see a debate. And that way, they get to know their candidates and who they're going to be voting for.
We all wanted to showcase the amazing things our students are able to do. And we all thought, what better way to do this than through this specific forum?
So when you have tons of different people working, and also in culinary, with making food, and you have student council, and some people on the school, and everybody coming together to make something for the public, you know, wanting to be the public's attention, I think it really helps display the students' skills and properties. But what we have with the new school versus what we didn't have with the old one.
Some of my favorite aspects about the debate included being able to work on a team and really have it like student-centered. You know, obviously, we got some help from teachers and administration, but it was really like the students leading everything, which is really fun. And then the actual, like, the night of the debate, like, everything was still student-led then. You know, students pretty much led the evening. Obviously, me and several other students were moderating the evening. Students interviews staying close to the evening, so student involvement was really nice.
Can you share with us a time when you collaborated with someone or a group of people that made a positive impact?
We started to formulate questions, you know, what type of clothes we should wear, what type of, you know, tone we should give off, how long we should ask the questions for, how we could set up people sitting right there with the timers while we're up there. And then it kind of sort of became, we got a lot of volunteers, assigned to different jobs, like greeters, candidate handlers, people that hand out the, not hand, but a little piece of paper, and then people hold the doors open.
Reflecting on their experiences, students agreed that their involvement in the debate provided them with meaningful life skills.
I think when you're learning in a classroom, obviously, it's productive in your learning, but on some level, you don't get like the full understanding of it. So when you're actually running a debate, you get to see all the little, the little problems that you're running to, everything you need to work on, like even the little stuff, just like lighting and everything. That was all the stuff we had to think about when normally it would just be like the facts of it and how to set it up.
So one of the most recent meaningful collaborations?
I would say it's something I had never really thought I would be doing. I've always kind of been comfortable with like public speaking and talking to large groups of people, but I think it was definitely hard for me to go against these candidates who like had all of their plots so written out and so perfectly created, to have to like stop them when they're midpoint. That was definitely something that I wasn't prepared to do. But learning what I said, and learning what I had to say, and being able to kind of gently stop them and direct them to what they were doing was something that took a lot of preparing, but it was something that you kind of got easier after the debate went on, and it was something that was very necessary.
That's, that's one thing I was actually really excited about for the debate because setting it up and actually going out there and moderating, it's a lot of active learning, you know. Something you can't learn from a textbook is actually like going out there and learning how to put a group of many different students together to run this whole thing.
I think this process was different because I think even in the questions, you could tell that the kids weren't doing it to like impress someone. They were doing it because it's what they wanted to be shared. It was really personal. It was something that the students involved were passionate about. They weren't just doing it for a grade. They weren't just doing it because they were told to. They were doing it because they actively wanted to be involved, and they cared about the cause.
This is a Blue Pride production, created by Attleboro High School's Radio and Television Broadcasting Program.
What we'll do next is they will share, they will share their process of how they actually put that entire piece together. And like I said earlier, this was something that they wanted to do, they were proud to do, and it wasn't something that they had to do. You could see their passion for it, and I know you'll be able to see it tonight, so they'll be able to share a little bit of their process with you. So I'll hand it over to them.
Okay. So one thing that definitely was a huge part of this is commitment because even though we were such a small group, a small group out of the people in our class working on it, it was like something that we really needed to be dedicated to, and we put in a lot of time. We stayed after school for many days, many hours. We did intervention for X Block. And it was just like, you really need to have that commitment in order to get this done, especially as a group. And also another thing that was kind of a little harsh and stressful at sometimes was on the deadline because we were, you know, like, we were still trying to get stuff as the deadline was getting closer. And, you know, we just had to keep on staying after, putting in those hours to really get this done on time. And it was really just like feeling like being put to work under pressure.
I think it was great to learn about everything that was like going on within the school community and getting to interact with so many different students. I learned a lot about how students of all ages prefer to learn and all the projects they've been working on. It was also a learning experience for us, creating and editing the video itself because it was such a huge project that was shown to like so many people.
I don't have a card to read off of. Okay. Collaboration was a big part of what we had to do because obviously, we had to reach out to so many people. And even when we were at those schools, getting students to do interviews with us and let us actually record them, like, obviously with cameras, we had to get up and close with them. So we really had to work with the students at different schools and even within the school to create this video, and it's just a great way to meet new people as well.
I have one question. Was it worth it?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Questions or comments from the committee? Mr. Guedes?
I think our colleagues at AACS might be pretty worried about their job going forward with how well that was put together. I was able to watch it, watch the video at the Night of Discovery and was, was really impressed with all of the work that went into it. And we've talked, especially this year, it feels like we've talked a lot about the soft skill education that's happening in the classroom. And so here, you talk about collaboration and time management. Like, those are, those are skills that are just as important for you to learn going forward to prepare you for career or college after high school. So incredible work. Be very proud of it. Great job.
Mrs. Torres?
Thank you, Mr. Torres. Yeah, great job. Let me start off by that, you know. So what I'd like to hear from you guys, what made you guys decide marketing? You know, what was your thought process in getting into marketing? Was there something that got you there? I mean, broadcast, well, broadcast, my fault. Thank you.
I've always just liked putting together videos and like being creative. So that's why I kind of like chose that path, and I want to do it, do something with it in the future.
I've also been a little interested in like video making, and I think probably my favorite part about the class is just like the collaboration and just like working together with everyone. It's so fun.
I also had a passion for creativity. I had my own camera to take pictures and stuff. And I was still unsure about which CTE I wanted to do, but when I had Ms. Bergeron, an explorer toy tipped me over the edge, and I already knew her, so it was a comfortable space where I could be creative and expressive in my own way.
And great teacher, will do that. One of the things I love about programs like this, especially all of our CTE programs, is, you know, learn by doing, experiential learning, being able to be behind the camera, in front of the camera, all of that. You know, it just, that's, you know, the highest level of learning that we have, and that's what we're seeing more and more of here in Attleboro. So, great job.
Yeah, one thing I really liked about the video and that's sometimes missed in videos is not just like the camera work, but also the audio. Like, I was at the event, too, and I think it was really cool, especially like the first part of the video, listening to like just the sounds of them working with the carpentry, like cutting wood and stuff. The sounds of that in, with the audio in the auditorium was really cool. So I think not only like the video skills, but also the sound skills involved is really cool.
Thank you. Thank you.
Scott?
Yeah, well, first of all, Zach, I agree with you because it captures you when you, when you see the video, when you watch it. It just kind, all those different elements just pull you into the story. So it was a great job of producing. I just, you know, we've talked so many times about this space, the new schedule, the way it allows, you know, especially in our CTE programs, the ability to collaborate, to work, to be able to go over to other schools to do this type of work. But it's not just here. We're seeing this at the middle schools, and we're seeing this at the elementary schools. The whole Night of Discovery was K through twelve, and every level, it's impressive with the type of work that they're doing. I, I'll be at Thatcher on Friday volunteering as my, my son's class puts together instruments out of just whatever materials they've, they've picked up. So just the whole steam element, just starting so young. By the time they get here, I mean, we barely scratched the surface with this building and the capabilities, and you're already putting such high-quality work out. It just makes me feel good about the kids in the, in the K through four by the time they get here, just, just where they will be. So there's always more work to do, but it's, it's just great to see all the work that we planned starting to pay off. And with productions like this, I would, I would echo Rob, we, we definitely, I wouldn't say I would put our partners out of, out of work, but it would certainly open the door for folks to have an interest. It's, it's great to have a partner like AACS to, to also be able to help out in our programs. So congratulations to all of you, and just job well done.
Yeah, so thank you. Two quick things first, just overall to the, to the district and high school. I was, I was at Night to Discover last Tuesday. It was a phenomenal event, a way to get people into the building and to showcase the great things that are going on in the district. And I think all our students from elementary school up through high school did a great job. And thank you to the administration and teachers for, for putting that together. And to the three of you and your colleagues in, in the department, the video is great. I'm glad to, to hear, you know, that you're wrestling with, you know, real deadlines and, you know, having to put something together that's going to be seen by the public and, you know, a source of pride because, you know, those are skills that you need, need to develop as you go into, quote, the real world. So that's great that, that you guys did that and put something together that was so well-done and powerful and that you can be proud of. So congratulations. Well, well done.
All right. Next on our agenda tonight, we have our Student Advisory Council update. I'll turn it over to Mr. Miller and Mr. Baderas.
Well, thank you, Mr. Torres. So recently, you've had a lot of student support for our basketball team. And originally, towards the beginning of the season, I mean, usually basketball is one of those sports where we can get a lot of people packed into the gym and we get a lot of, a lot of student support because obviously, when we have a school this big, there's obviously going to be a lot of like clicks and a lot of divides between our school. But it seems like with, with basketball, we usually get a good amount of like people from everywhere just coming together to support one thing of Attleboro. So it's really nice to see. just coming together to support one thing of Attleboro. So it's really nice to see. And towards the beginning of the season, you know, we weren't really having like a ton of fans come out, but it was really nice to see towards the end of the season for senior night and for, especially for our whole playoff game against Everett. It was really nice to see a lot of, a lot of fans coming out to support their fellow classmates and just cheer for each other. And even when we had the away game at time, you know, I was there, a lot of people were still there to support, and it was really just nice to see like everyone supporting each other. And there was just a good showing of Blue Pride, I feel.
Yeah, that's one of the things that I've seen this year that's a little different than the past is that, yeah, we've had supportive games before of all sports, but I feel like there's even more this year. And the fact that we're going to away games, like important ones like the playoffs, but even like regular season games, there's a lot of people going, traveling with the team to support them even on the road. And then another thing that's been going on in the school, we just had our, the music department just had our Prism concert last week. Thank you to those of you that were there, I know a couple of you were there. So it's really nice. It's usually one of our larger audience concerts and it's really nice and cool because it's not just us like sitting on the stage playing, but the concert is mostly small groups and each group like plays in a different spot in the auditorium. So it was really nice this year to have such a like unique auditorium with even like two floors and everything. So we really took advantage of that space, because you know, in the past, in the old gray, it was just kind of like do a ring around. But that was, that was still cool, but this is obviously on a different level. And it's really nice to see some of you and other members of the community there, because it, you know, it shows that people are supporting us from outside our little circle, you know, obviously kids have their parents and stuff that go, but people that are outside of that circle showing up to events like that shows us that we're, you know, we're doing something that matters, we're doing something that people enjoy. And then one more comment, just next week, or not next week, next meeting here, we'll have a little presentation to show about our regional meeting as Student Advisory Council that we went to the other week. So we'll have some information on that next time.
Ms. Larson?
Just to piggyback on your comment, Prism Concert is always a lot of fun to go to, and you guys did a fantastic job in all the different aspects. It looked like everybody's, all the performers were really having a great time. So congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Thank you both. All right, next we have our superintendent's report. Mr. Sawyer?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to start by perhaps making the final word on last week's Night to Discover. I think it's important to note that this event really marked the return to schooling as we like to see it, as, you know, we have been unable to deliver it for some time. And, you know, this August, we spent a lot of time with the building administrations, making sure that they were prepared to reset the district back towards what we're doing, what we do best and what we know how to do best. And it was wonderful to see the fruits of those labors and to feel that we really have made great strides to getting back to the work that we're proud of and that we know how to do so well. I would also just like to say that, you know, on display was a real sense of our vision for what instruction in this district should look like. I don't know about all of you, but when I think back to my own schooling years, if I think about the things that I learned and the things that really stuck with me, they all were related to big projects I did that were meaningful, that had a personal connection, and which I was given some opportunity to work with others and to find a way to express my own understanding. And when we do that work, you know, I think the way the kids respond to that and the way that they were able to articulate their learning to the public really captures why we believe that this is the best way to educate our children. And we're very proud of the strides we've made moving us in that direction. And we hope that this is just one step in many towards more of these kinds of experiences for our students. Last week, I attended the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents South Shore Roundtable Legislative Breakfast. Don't ask me to say that twice. I first wanted to express my appreciation for our legislative delegation here in Attleboro. Our representatives Hawkins and Scanlon and Senator Feeney were all there, as I knew they would be because they are staunch supporters of our school system. And, you know, they always answer the bell when we ring it and say that we need their support. They were there in full force and expressed, you know, their support for the, for the effort. I shared with you in your materials, the, what they call the Legislative Advocacy Platform, it's a series of bills and strategies that Mass is using to try to improve support for our schools. I thought I should mention to you tonight that the two, the two biggest ones that would have the greatest impact for us in this particular budget year is that they are looking to increase the foundation budget, and that they also are looking to increase Circuit Breaker for, for the next budget year. They're attempting to improve Circuit Breaker on two different levels. One, they are looking to lower the threshold. So the way Circuit Breaker works is that when we spend X number of dollars on students with IPs, if they're, if, we only can claim Circuit Breaker if the amount being expended, expended is greater than a certain threshold. And so by lowering the threshold, that makes more money eligible for reimbursement. It also would include more students if they have students who are, you know, approaching the threshold but don't quite exceed it. So they are looking to lower the threshold, and then they're also looking to increase the percentage. Historically, it's been around seventy-five percent, they're looking to improve that to ninety. And that would be a pretty significant increase for this district. So that's good news that they have big ideas about how to improve funding across the state. But my last point about the experience is that it's very clear that, from Mass's perspective, and I don't think they have this wrong, that for something to have a chance to be effective at a state level, to get enough people to buy in to, you know, change laws and to change outcomes on Beacon Hill requires wide appeal. They are really putting their effort into things that affect everybody. So things like the foundation budget, right, the number of dollars per student that's being increased is something that affects every district. Circuit Breaker, every district. There's another piece that they're working on about transportation, every district, right? They are looking for ways to move the needle that there's a win for everyone, because a large percentage of the state is dissatisfied with the Student Opportunity Act. Two-thirds of the districts don't receive any money, and really twenty-five districts receive the lion's share of SOA. Now, we're in that one-third that do get money, but we are not in the twenty-five districts who get most of the money. So we're in the position where, you know, most, most other districts look at us with envy because we got something. But, you know, quite frankly, what we got, as we've talked about many times, isn't closing the gap that we're facing. And so hasn't really changed reality for us. And the thing that concerns me about the presentation from that morning and the message and the strategy is that while these extra funds are necessary and would make a big difference, there was a lot of discussion at the breakfast about how, you know, the pandemic has left a mental health crisis in its wake, that's absolutely the case, and that Essar provided funds to districts that helped us to hire resources that are helping to address those needs, and that with Essar going away, many districts, most districts are facing losing resources at precisely the time when we need more, not less. So all of this makes sense. But the real thing that concerns me is that these strategies which have this wide appeal will help us, but they will do nothing to address the, the gap that we face that is really at the heart of why things are such a challenge here in Attleboro, right? And if we as a community think that the state is going to do something to change that reality for us, right, that again, twenty percent difference, it's pretty clear to me that there's no appetite at the state level to do that, that the only changes that are going to gain enough support to have any chance of succeeding are things that have much wider impact. And what has wide impact means that everyone benefits from it, which means that there's no win for us locally in terms of trying to bridge that gap between our funding and what, you know, average funding looks across the Commonwealth. So the good news is that there's, there's progress being made on getting us more funds, but the bad news is that we're not going to be catching up with those funds. We're going to remain in the same sort of situation that we are. So that was my takeaway from that experience. Is there any questions?
Ms. Latchey?
So while I, while I understand that in theory, you know, we'll never catch up if everything's relative to everybody else, so average spending per, you know, per district is gonna, everybody elevates, but we still hold position. The idea of additional funding could still help us bridge some of the things that we need or feel that we need that we're behind. So although we might still rank where we rank, if we could close the gap of that sum year over year that would really help make a difference in Attleboro, I would think that that's at least reason for optimism.
That would be very helpful, and we're, again, I expressed my sincere appreciation to our legislators that, you know, this is help we need and would make a difference for Attleboro students, and so we're all for it. But, you know, there's, there's two different problems here. One, in this year, you know, in any year, we never have enough money to do everything we feel like we need to do. But there's also this structural problem that the distance between us and what other districts are doing continues to widen, and that puts tremendous pressure on us because we're required to meet the same standards that they are.
Understood.
Yep. Okay, switching subjects. You know, we've had a couple incidents in the last couple weeks here in the district, and while I don't want to get into any specifics for various host of reasons, I do see a troubling trend that I wanted to talk a little bit about tonight. You know, as you know, the district has eight hundred employees interacting with six thousand students and thousands of parents on a given day. That's a lot of human interaction, and as I joke all the time, you know, there are four people at my house and, you know, we can't all get along in any one given day. So the idea that thousands of people sometimes have some problems should come as a surprise to no one. That said, you know, there are real issues, and I think it's, it is excellent that parents report concerns that they have, that they, you know, seek help with those problems, that they want clarification when they don't understand or don't have all the information that they need. We welcome that, and I believe that as a district, we do a good job of, of addressing those concerns when they're raised. And so I don't want to say anything that's misconstrued as not wanting that. That's necessary, it's an important part of what we do, it's welcomed. This is not what I'm talking about. And I also want to make a point that, you know, with all these adults interacting, yeah, mistakes get made, right? I would never claim that we are perfect. We make mistakes, people who work here make mistakes, and it's, again, it's helpful when people raise those concerns because that gives us a chance to address them and to, to fix those mistakes. Because that's ultimately what I hope the community's looking for in an institution of this size. Not that we're perfect, but that when we have issues, you know, we are attentive to them and address them. However, I, I believe there is a troubling trend, and it is not a local trend, this is part of a larger national trend, in which there is a basic distrust that I see growing between the families we serve and the district as a whole. And it gets expressed in multiple ways, and it's one thing that I'm becoming quite alarmed about. Now, again, this is, this is something that you read about, you know, you can see news stories, you can read about in magazines, right? This is, I don't think this is local at all. This is a national trend, and it's leading to significant numbers of educators leaving the profession. It also helps to explain why we are struggling to fill every vacant position in this district. And again, not an Attleboro thing, this is a trend across the state and across the nation. So this is troubling, that the conditions, I think, in public education have shifted a bit, and there is a new set of attitudes that we are encountering that I think helped to create a climate in which many people say, you know what, I'm going to find something else to do, this is not exactly what I'm up for. And I have to tell you, I think Attleboro is especially vulnerable to these forces, because as we were just talking about, in Attleboro, right, we are funded at a level that's about twenty, twenty percent less than the average in this Commonwealth. And yet we produce, you know, for the, for the kind of funding we get, we produce better than average results. So, well, better than the results than the people who are funded like we are is what I'm trying to say. And so the improved results that we get, as we talk about all the time, are absolutely due to the dedication of our educators, right? We have excellent educators in Attleboro, they come, they're passionate about what they do, they care about kids, they really make the difference in terms of our ability. We do not have the staff that other districts have, right? There are about two hundred people who would work here if we were funded at an appropriate level. That they're not here means that the people who are here have to pick up the slack and make up the difference. And they do that because they care about kids. But I worry that if we lose them and lose their, their passion and commitment to our kids because they feel defeated, that will be a problem certainly for those of us who have to run the district, but it'll be a problem for Attleboro's school system in particular, but, you know, at public education on the wise bread. I am not saying that there aren't issues here. And some of the attitudes that we're talking about in which, you know, it seems like there's, again, a basic distrust in our educators. I'm not saying that there aren't legitimate things that have to be worked out, worked out here. I'm not saying that, you know, there aren't problems that don't exist, and I think that as a district, we should own our share of that problem. If people have issues, we should, you know, work through those issues and try to do a better job. I do not wish anyone to think that we're going to be dismissive of the problems that we have, and that we have problems doesn't in and of itself concern me. I want the community to hold the school district accountable, right? We serve the community. We are the schools that belong to the community. If the community has issues or are not satisfied with what we're producing, you know, people should ask tough questions. I welcome all of that. But if we can't work together as educators and community members to collaborate in the interest of the kids that we are working to serve, the whole enterprise is doomed. And more and more, the kinds of things that are being expressed worry me that that agreement that we're here together for a common good is something that is less something that I can take for granted. And I just wanted to raise this issue, I don't think there's anything to be done about it, but as somebody who's on the front line, who's, who's worked with these things, as this becomes more and more of a concern, I felt like I should say something publicly about it and at least, you know, start a conversation in the community about what's the proper way to work through this.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with you completely. I mean, I think, you know, we, I, you know, receive a lot of, receive a lot of complaints, or not complaints, concerns, questions, and the complaints from the parents are, you know, usually well-founded. And even if, you know, they might not be satisfied with the ultimate answer, I think they're coming from a good place. I think what concerns me is the, kind of the community pylon you see a lot now, where lots of times now it feels like complaints that we get or concerns that are raised are by not people who are directly involved. And what concerns me is the, the impact that those concerns have on the legitimate concerns that are raised every day. Because when a district of as many students and teachers and parents exists and has legitimate concerns raised every day, you know, the pylon effect of people who might, who might be raising concerns that they might not know all the facts about, it takes away from, I think, naturally, the initial willingness to listen to, you know, to a complaint you may hear that ends up being legitimate. So it's a little bit of that boy, you pride, wolf idea where, you know, the more it's raised, the legitimate concerns get, get washed out. And the amount of legitimate concerns we hear are, you know, are substantial, and I want those to continue to be raised. But social media, I think, makes it considerably worse because you see it there especially. But it's just something that I would wish that community members would, would consider before raising the alarm about a situation that they might not have all the facts about.
Mr. Gudis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with both of you, and I do think a lot of it is just misinformation or misunderstanding of, of facts or not a full understanding of context of different situations. I guess, I guess my question is, as you've seen this as a growing trend, is there any one thing in particular that you think has, that was like a catalyst for, for this? Or is, is there anything, because I think to Mr. Withers' point, a lot of the concerns we get are, this was happening to my student in this school. happening to my student in this school. Occasionally, it's, this situation is developing in the school, and we would like you to do something about it. But is there, is, are there any specific trends or anything that we, I shouldn't say, we don't want to go into any real specifics of a student situation, but I guess, is there, is there a starting point to this that you have noticed over the last few years? Because I agree, it has progressively gotten worse.
First of all, this is, there's a portion of this trend that goes back as far as my career does. I can remember as a young teacher being caught off guard by the fact that, you know, and you know, there was only, it was basically six years between graduating from high school and becoming a teacher, right? So that's not a huge chunk of time, but somehow in that, in that span, it went from when I was a kid, if the school called home, the student was in trouble regardless of whether, you know, they were right or wrong, right? Like, was, you know, trouble first, ask questions later, right? And I remember as a young teacher being really caught off guard by the fact that somehow that had changed in the time that I had left, been out of high school. And I feel like that trend of, you know, parents not wanting to hear from the school that there was an issue with something that was present then and has accelerated since. So some of this has been ongoing for a long time, but other things I think are more recent. I think that the national campaign to turn school committees into a political battleground has certainly politicized schools and put people on watch. I feel like some people are playing gotcha with us, to be quite honest, looking for us to fall into certain traps that, I mean, we work really hard to keep out of, but, you know, as I said, I'm not saying we're perfect, but I think that's a product of the overall politicization of our country, of our society, so that's a more recent thing. And then, you know, not that I really wish to talk about this, but I think the lingering effects of pandemic policies is another thing that changed the relationship between families and schools, and one that I think schools have to repair, to be honest with you. So, you know, those are just a couple of highlights, but it's a pretty complicated thing, but, again, some of these situations include just experiences in which, to me, reveal that at the bottom of it is, I'm across the table from somebody who does not want to see schools succeed. They want their child to succeed, right? But there's not a real belief or commitment to our education system, and that's a thing that seems pretty new to me.
And it's surprising that there would even be a concept that those two could be exclusive of each other, right? Like, in order for the student to succeed, the schools have to succeed, and in order for the schools to succeed, the students have to succeed.
Yeah, but in those moments, it almost seems like zero sum, right? Right? For the student to succeed, we have to fail.
Yeah.
We have to be wrong.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. One final note tonight, one of my favorites, weather. As I'm sure you're aware, there's quite a storm forecast coming in tonight, and the most recent forecast we got from the National Weather Service says that we'll be switching from rain to snow midday tomorrow. So we're planning some communication this evening to just notify families that we're having school tomorrow, but that everyone should keep their eye on the forecast and look for information from us, because if it comes in sooner than we anticipate, or it comes down heavier than we anticipate, you know, heavy snow midday could result in us needing to do an early dismissal. Now, we'll do everything in our power to not have that happen, I know that's a huge disruption, and we'll try to avoid it, but I just want families to know that that, based on the conditions that we're expecting, is not impossible, but certainly, we're going to try to avoid that. And then we'll keep an eye on what the conditions are over Tuesday night and, you know, communicate to families what to expect on Wednesday. That's a whole other issue, but right now, we're just focused on what happens tomorrow afternoon. I would also mention that we're canceling after-school activities tomorrow. Pretty much, we're going to shut down the district as soon as school gets out.
Mr. Johnson?
Just wanted to make a comment that, for those who are able to, in the community, do their best to clear sidewalks, if they are in an area where there are walkers, we've got littles at the elementary school, and while parents are often there, depending on the weather, it's helpful to those vulnerable members of our school community to keep those clear, again, if possible.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. Next, we have our minutes from our February 27, 2022 meeting. Minutes were circulated with your materials, I'll undertake a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion edits? No? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, consent agenda, six items tonight. Motion to accept the check in the amount of $47.54 from Chipotle to the high school gift donation line. Motion to accept the contractual obligation from Chestnut Hill Studio in the amount of $431, which is the 2023 Seniors Commission. Motion to accept the contractual obligation from Chestnut Hill Studios in the amount of $951, which is the, which is from the 2022-2023 School Pictures Commission at the high school. Motion to accept the contractual obligation in the amount of $56.65 from Planet Aid Inc. as broken down on the check receipt dated February 24, 2023. Motion to accept the contractual obligation in the amount of $1,522.57 from Shutterfly Life Touch LLC, which is the commission from the 22-23 Fall Individual Student Pictures at Wamsetta. And motion to accept the donation in the amount of $5,500 from the Feinstein Foundation to the Brennan Middle School.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda passes. Moving on, subcommittee reports tonight, we'll start with finance and budget, Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance and Budget Subcommittee met Wednesday, March 1st. We reviewed monthly financials with Mr. Fratato. Really still just the same two items of concern that we're continuing to monitor, we're continuing to run over because we are contracting out to hire paraprofessionals that we haven't been able to hire on full-time, so we're overspending on that line, and we are also overspending on the transportation line items having to do with some of the special ed transportation costs that we are incurring because we didn't know that we were going to have to, long and short of that. After that, we had a brief MSBA update. Two highlights there, the train contract that we've been talking about and proceeding with in a number of the buildings is continuing to go really well, starting to see the fruits of those efficiencies, so that's nice to see. And the roof project at Willett is out in the bid process, I actually saw the bid in the paper this morning, so that is well underway, again, because we're trying to do that on a very short timetable and get that done this summer in between students leaving and students coming back. After that, we have a few housekeeping issues, we have a few motions to bring forward to the full committee. First is a motion to, forward to the city council, approval of prior year invoices in the amount of $4,857.24.
So moved.
Is there a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Second is entertain a motion to remove the $20 discount per child at the early registration, sorry, I'm going to reread this. Motion to approve the fee for service fees for the 2023 fiscal year to remove the $20 discount per child for early registration and set the fees as first student, $190, second student, $160, third student, $130, and a maximum family of $470 for the 23-24 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? We actually spent a fair amount of time on this, so I think you had all the information in your packets.
So, Mr. Larson?
Yes.
So, so one comment I have is that the, how this was set up prior was that, for example, first student would be $170 if they registered before the date, before the deadline, and if they registered after the deadline, it would be $190. So what we're saying now is that we're removing that $20 discount. I, personally, I think that is a very big jump for this fee, and this would be something that I, I understand that the reason behind this, and Mr. Fratato, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the system that we have can't have different step breaks at different times. I would prefer to see us staying at the original rate and waiving that $20 late charge, so I feel about it, I don't know if anyone else has any strong thoughts about that or not.
Well, just to correct, it's not a late charge, we're just dropping the discount for early registration.
Okay.
The total, sorry, the total was up to 500 last year, now it's down to 470. This is partially to make up for clarity for the rest of the committee, there is going to be a credit card fee associated if you pay online, which is going to be the new method we're looking to do. So if you have three students in the system, you would still be paying a little bit less than 500 after the credit card fees go through. So there's a net reduction, not by much, but it is still holding line where we were.
Kind of holding the line.
Mr. Storrs?
Real simple one, not a big deal, but I did my higher math on first student, second student, third student. Yeah, those up, you get 480, but the maximum for a family is 470, so why? It seems like you can never actually pay 130 for a third student since you have a maximum $10 less. Just throwing that your way.
Sorry.
I don't know, I see 470.
Hold on.
In the memo, it's 180 plus 160 plus 130, which is 470.
Oh, that's not what's here.
Okay.
Oh, it's in the, it's in the document.
Okay, I'm looking at the agenda, I'm looking at the agenda. Let me do my math.
Yeah, the agenda's wrong. The attached document is correct.
I went by the agenda. So I retract that because I guess it's, the agenda's wrong.
Okay, so the correct number should have been, I'm sorry. What did you have?
So in the attached document, user P, it's, we go 180, 160, 130, for a total of 470. So Jim's correct based off the agenda, but the attached is what was proposed at the five.
So the first student listed as 190.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to amend the motion that I just brought forward to be 180, 160, 130.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, so one abstaining and one no. Okay. All right, next is to bring forward a motion to approve the fee schedule for the Children's Center 2023-2024 school years as detailed by the memo from Catherine Lynch.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Next, little housekeeping, motion to approve to allow Camp Ram's bottom to use the Willett parking lot for pickup and drop-off this summer of 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And our all-time yearly favorite, motion to hold a public hearing on April 24, 2023 for the proposal of the FY '23 fiscal budget.
So moved.
Second.
This will be a riveting time, I promise. All in favor?
One, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we have to propose a time in this, or can that be determined at a later date?
I just have to call for it, and the chairman will tell me when he's going to have it.
There'll be a posted agenda.
Yeah, it'll be probably posted agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Next, we have policy and personnel, Mr. Storrs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Policy and Personnel Subcommittee met on last week on Monday, March 6th. The first item that we did was, we had students from our criminal justice CTE program attend a meeting with a senior project proposal of a restorative justice type thing that would be a student court. I can tell you, I went into that very apprehensive, the idea of students deciding discipline of students was one of those gray area type things, but I was, I must say, I was extremely impressed by the student group that we had. They answered half of my questions without, you know, before I even got a chance to ask them. So they're going to be coming to our next meeting. Between now and then, the way we left it with them is we asked them to write everything up into a big proposal type thing, a big bylaws type thing, send it out to the members of the subcommittee, if not the other members, but ultimately, they're going to come to our next meeting and present on this, and generally, what I can say is this, the idea would be that the criminal justice students would, for lower-level offenses, and only under a voluntary condition, so levels one through three for the most part, and again, this is all going to be gate-kept by our assistant principals, so the ones who are responsible for discipline as it is now. It would go to them, and if they felt that it was appropriate to go to the court and the student who, you know, has admitted wrongdoing or what have you, then it could go to the student court. And the idea is that this restorative justice, the court would hold the discussion with the student, go through things, and ultimately determine what path could be used to restore the relationship between everybody, and ultimately would be removed from their record and things of that nature. And again, we're talking about the low-level type offenses, you know, use your cell phone in class, those kind of things, we're not talking, you know, higher-level type offenses. So like, instead of detention, suspensions, things of that nature, it might include apologies, community service, things of that nature, so you guys can kind of see where we're going. And this aligns very much with the law that was changed back in October by the state, which talks about having to look at restorative justice prior to suspensions or things of that nature. The idea, do our best to keep kids in school whenever we can, that's where the state came from. So, again, the type of questions that the committee, you know, asked of the students had to do, like, I thought they were pretty intense questions. For example, I brought about HIPAA-related questions, IEPs and things of that nature. We talked about why would the makeup of the court be the CTE students and not others, and, again, they had answers for all of these things, and well-thought-out. They're actually going to propose how the courtroom would look, and I asked, would it be lawyers? It wouldn't be really lawyers, it'd be more like advocates, but somebody serving in those roles. So all of this was, it was a really interesting concept. I gotta admit, they changed me from, you know, kind of leaning towards the notes to be in, kind of in favor of this over the course of the discussion, and all of the members of the subcommittee thought this was a good thing. And again, more experiential learning for our students, which is always a great thing. So, again, more information to come, I'm just giving you the prelude, but the students are working very hard right now to be able to present this to us at our next meeting. All right? Okay, so the next step is we went through all of our policies, again, we've reviewed our annual, or biannual review of Section E, so the following motions were brought forward. The first one was the motion, and as I always do, I'll do groups, and then I'll ask if anybody wants me to take any of the policies separately. The first one was to align the following policies with mask as presented. JICA student dress code, EEAE-A-E1, drug and alcohol testing for bus drivers, commercial drivers, and EEAG student transportation, just to explain each real quick. JICA, no big deal, other than we were missing, so where it says parents, we need to add in parents slash guardians, but other than that, it aligns currently with mask. EEAE-A-E1 will be redesignated as policy EEAE-B, and other than that, it aligns with mask, and EEAG already aligns with mask. So, does anybody want me to take either of those three separately? Seeing none. Again, all these motions were voted out of the subcommittee unanimously, putting them right up to discussion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all three of those passed, thank you. Next, again, moving on with our, Section E's of the policy manual, motion to note the review date of the following policies that align with mask, and there are some minor changes, I'll summarize as I go through the list. Policy EB Safety Program. Policy EB safety program, minor text changes to align with mask. EBAV pest management policy, just noting the review date. EBV first aid, we're changing the word student, child to student and removing, actually, and removing a statement regarding AEDs being in each school because we already have them. So the wording that we currently have in the policy is not necessary. So again, this will be fully aligned with mask after making those changes. EBC emergency plans, remove non-related reference, that is in the policy. EBCFA face coverings, again, it aligns with mask, just to let everybody know, the face covering policy is still in effect in the state, so that's why we still have this. But again, no changes to it, just noting the review date. EC buildings and grounds management, ECA buildings and ground security, ECAC vandalism, noting the review date for those. ECAF, security cameras in school, we just have an additional statement in ours, but other than that, it aligns with masks. And the statement is about our practices. EDC, authorized use of school-owned materials. EEAD, school bus safety program. EEAEC, student conduct on school buses. EEAJ, motor vehicle idling on school grounds. EFC, free and reduced-priced food services. And EFD meal charge policy, again, noting the review date for those. Is there anybody, yes?
Just looking through these, they indicate, the ones that aren't changed, reviewed, and the ones that are tweaked a little bit, updated, but then it says 2022.
Shouldn't it be 2023? Or was this from?
So it'll be 2023.
Mask review has been 2022.
Right, so.
Mask reviewed.
Right, where it says mask, mask 2022, that means that it's mask review in 2022, but our review date will be.
At the bottom where it says school committee finalized, okay. All right, thank you.
So are there any policies that somebody wants me to take separately? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All of those are approved. Next section is motion to note the review date of the following policies that are different than mask, but they reflect Attleboro's procedures and protocols. Policy ADF, health and wellness policy, no changes to it. EEA, school committee transportation policy, no different, no changes. And EBCD, emergency closings, no changes.
I do have a question about these. Are they different because they specify Attleboro or are they different in a more unique fashion?
So it, it's not just that it has Attleboros, it's, it's more that we do things, so these policies are kind of procedural in a lot of ways, and this talks about how we do things here in Attleboro, which is different than the generic policy that mask has.
Thank you.
And, and we, whenever these come up, we do talk about it, we do talk, you know, should we align with mask? We always try our best to align with mask policy whenever we can, but so we do have the conversation about, you know, is this the time to try to align that? But very often, some of the things that we do are very specific and the policy, the mask policy, wouldn't really cover that, so we keep it, we recommend to keep it.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. So does anybody want me to take any of those separately? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, those pass. And we close the meeting with new business, just a quick discussion regarding the type of information and the executive branch of the city, the mayor, and what can be provided, what is being provided. It was, I thought it was a good conversation. Some, it started off with whether or not we should add wording into our policies to state that the mayor has, you know, is entitled to get whatever they want, be part of the discussions, anything of that nature. But ultimately, the Subcommittee didn't feel that was necessary because right now, when practice, that's happening. You know, in our conversation with the administration, I asked, is there any communication that we, the school committee receives that the mayor wouldn't? The answer was absolutely anything that we get, the mayor can get, does get, the Friday updates, the information for our meetings, what have you, all that information can be shared with the mayor, of course. At the same time, any meetings that we're going to have, we, you know, the mayor can be involved, the mayor can come and, and take part in that. Also, in negotiations, it's happened in the past, we've discussed how the mayors have been part of the negotiations, and that is welcome. So there, there's a couple little talk, you know, things that the Subcommittee discussed that I'll talk with the chairperson about, but overall, there is nothing that the mayor is not able to have as far as communication, information, or even involvement. So I think that's important to note. And again, the Subcommittee felt that there's no reason to put this in policy because it's already in practice. Just to put it out there, is there anybody on the Subcommittee that wants to add anything? Rob, anybody? Okay. Good summary of that discussion? Yeah, great. Okay, and that, Mr. Chair, concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Storrs. That concludes our committee report tonight. Moving on, we have open forum. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the committee at open forum tonight? All right, seeing no one, I will close open forum and we will meet an executive session. The Adorable School Committee, the Adorable School Committee will convene in an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A, 2 and 3, to discuss strategy with respect to negotiations with the union and non-union personnel, and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee, the school committee will not return to open session.
So moved. Second.
Chairman, before you start the roll.
Yeah.
I had one item. Normally, we ask about new business or acknowledgements, I just wanted to get out there before the early executive session.
Fair point.
I'll be brief.
Yeah.
I just wanted to acknowledge Melissa Shakni was awarded by the local VFW post, also the local district command, which consists of 14 other posts, and the state, Teacher of the Year for her involvement with our vets and our educate, and our students. And not only that, but I believe her application, because it was something that you fill out an application for potential acknowledgement, hers is also being submitted for national recognition. So I wanted to just acknowledge Melissa Shakni for all the great work that she does. The veterans are hugely proud of her. I think there will be some other, they came today, along Rep. Hawkins, Jerry Lynch, Phil Arnett, and the District Commander John Moore, actually came to Brennan at 10 o'clock today, this morning, to give her a certificate of appreciation for that. So thank you, Melissa, for all you do for our vets and keeping our connections between two great groups.
Thanks, Mr. Domenici. I apologize for jumping the gun. Any other new business tonight? No? All right, since we're doing collective bargaining, I'm going to make sure we do this completely by the book and read the motion again. The Adorable School Committee will convene an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 30A, Sections 21A, 2 and 3, to discuss strategy with respect to negotiations with union and non-union personnel, and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee, the committee will not return to open session.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Gudis?
Yes.
Mr. Withers? Yes, Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
Ms. Porto?
Yes.
Mr. Domenici?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Frappier?
Yes.
All right, we'll take two minutes and then reconvene.